What is it? One oh three now. Oh my, no wonder my clock has the wrong time. I didn't change it yet on this clock. So how do we move forward? So first of all, um, if you want, Megan, this is our first time meeting. You want to just introduce yourself a little bit?
Sure, that would be great. Thank you again. Thank you so much for um, having us. My name is Megan Lemay. I'm the Regional Manager at the Alzheimer's Association in Western Mass here. Um, so I oversee all of our programs and services for all four counties in Western Mass, which includes a lot of education programs. That's a lot of what we do at the Alzheimer's Association. Is trying to provide that education and support to families who are currently going through and and coping with an Alzheimer's diagnosis and other types of dementia as well. And then we also run a twenty-four seven helpline um, that anyone can call anytime and can access that for support and education around Alzheimer's disease and dementia. And I've been working closely with Z and some of our other coalition members on the dementia friendly Springfield initiative. So I've been in this position for six years. So even, you know, back before the pandemic, we were trying to work on on the city getting, becoming dementia friendly and they did. So the city of Springfield just, I think we, you know, we put this in the email too. But just as a reminder of the history, the city of Springfield did commit to being dementia friendly and sign the pledge to be dementia friendly back in twenty nineteen. So obviously that was before the pandemic. Uh, and also age friendly as a part of that too. Which was great that the city committed to that. But it's time to really get some work done around that. You know, we don't want to just sign a sign the pledge or sign the form and say, oh, we're a dementia friendly city without really doing the work and making sure that people have access to the education, the resources, that families are getting some support in in coping with this disease, that individuals living with it are are being supported and it's an inclusive environment for them. So that's kind of where we're at. And I can talk more specifically about some things we can do, but um, I'll I'll hand it over to Z for a minute first. And and yeah, we can get into some of the specifics, but.
Yeah. So again, thank you, Zeta and the rest of the committee for allowing us to talk a little bit about the Springfield Dementia Friendly Coalition and specifically on how you can, you can help. So the way I like to look at this is, uh, you know, we deal with mentation, meaning that's a broad grouping of you know, things that impact the mind. So you know, dementia certainly falls within that category. So as Megan mentioned, I'm Z Johnson. I'm currently the Chairperson of the Springfield Dementia Friendly Coalition and a social worker at Bay State that works primarily with families um, and patients who are living with dementia. So to give you a little bit of background, uh, and just to piggyback on what uh, Megan said, we were formed, the actual coalition was formed in twenty eighteen by Cynthia Scott Mitchum, who unfortunately passed away in twenty twenty. Um, and his purpose originally was to have a group of organizations that will work together to collaborate and provide as much knowledge and awareness to the um, city of Springfield. So we are a grassroots organization. We're a volunteer organization. You know, we're always on the ground. But in addition to that, you know, we have some very important history. You know, Megan talked about twenty nineteen. And you know, just as a reminder, Springfield was the first city in the United States to be recognized for its commitment to um, improving the life of older adults. So that meant we had three distinctions. We had age friendly, we had dementia friendly. And I don't want us to forget the health system designation too. So it was actually three of them back in um, twenty nineteen. And if you think about it, this is heavy stuff. You know, we're in the big leagues. We're in the big leagues. So we can't just fall along the wayside because, you know, we've kind of set the tone for the nation. So you know, why are we here today? So you know, in twenty twenty-two, and I'm sure the numbers are even greater, but eleven percent of people over six, age sixty-five will have a diagnosed diagnosis of dementia. And this is something that's diagnosed. Can you imagine the people who are not or who are in denial? So you know, the numbers are are a lot higher. So that's a lot of us. You know, and we all know someone with dementia, with Alzheimer's, either they are caring for someone who may have the disease, or we have observed folks in our community, whether that's in church. It could be family, it's friends, it could be coworkers, but we recognize that it's it's here. And it's prevalent, especially in the African American and Latino communities. So what we are trying to do is, you know, reach the communities and identify the difference between, you know, normal aging. Yeah, it's it's normal to forget, but then you remember. And the and the difference in dementia where you really, uh, your life is impacted. You know, your daily life is impacted by not being able to do, you know, just regular functional activities. So uh, we know we can't reverse dementia, but what we can do is be proactive in our community by providing education and awareness and and allowing people and letting people know that you can still live a quality life if you have a diagnosis of dementia, you know, but it's just like anything. You want to manage manage that um, disease or manage care for someone who's living with dementia. And and we certainly know that caregiving is not easy, whether it's someone who is living with dementia or you just maybe care for a loved one who has another illness. So um, that's really, really important. So how how do we go about doing our work? So we get out to the community. Many of you have seen uh, Megan at different events. You've seen me at different events. You know, we speak to different groups and organizations. You know, we hold um, community forums. You know, in the past, um, back in maybe twenty nineteen, I believe, it might have been twenty twenty. But we did some trainings to the city departments of Springfield. And you know, we want to continue that trend because, you know, we want to, especially with the city of Springfield, we want to make sure we have the approach of um, diffusing, you know, situations, especially people impacted by dementia rather than escalating it. And we know how that can, that can happen. So some of our signature programs, we we currently have two. Memory Sunday is a big one. That's the second Sunday in June. And it's really to commemorate uh, African Americans who are either living with dementia or who have passed on as a result of the disease. So back in twenty nineteen, we had our first display of Memory Sunday at um, St. John's Congregational Church. And I do remember Commissioner um, Carlton providing us with the proclamation. And then, you know, over the years, because of COVID, we were kind of low key or we did some things virtual. But then last year, we came back out again in twenty twenty-two and uh, we collaborated with the faith um, based organization. And a number of us spoke at different churches. Um, I spoke at St. John's and um, I believe Megan spoke at other churches. So you know, we're out there to let folks know that, you know, it really does impact the African, African American community. And we know that the church is an important part of our history. So that's why we actually target uh, and want to make sure we use that as a forum for giving away knowledge. And then our second program, which is coming up in June, is for caregivers. So we certainly pay attention to those folks who are living with dementia, but also the caregivers. Because we're going to allow them to tell their story of caring for someone with dementia. We have some interesting stories uh, that we can share, which will also help folks uh, in the audience or, you know, help create awareness of, you know, it can be difficult and some of the signs and things like that. So what is our ask? What do we need from you all? So we want you to support us. Not in words, not only in words, I'll put it that way, not only in words, but in deeds. And you may say, well, what what can we do? Well, you can invite us to collaborate and partner with organizations that you're affiliated with. You know, the city council represents wards. So that's an opportunity to have us come in and talk to to the residents. We have uh, not only local representation, but we have state representation. You know, we have some state reps. Pass this on to them so that they can uh, be aware that we exist and that we do offer beneficial information and can assist, you know, their residents. Again, invite us to, you know, neighborhood meetings that you may have. Um, and just, you know, make sure that you keep us at the forefront of um, you know, any activities and partnerships that we can have. Because uh, you know, the aging population is growing. And if you look in Springfield, it is certainly growing. And uh, we, we are a mighty force. So it's just good to uh, make sure that we are satisfied in terms of knowledge and awareness and what's going on with Springfield. So uh, if you have any questions for me, I'll be happy to answer them now. I can answer them at the end. So I'll pass it on to Megan unless you have some questions.
If I may, um, Ms. Z, thank you so much for that. Thank you, Megan. Thank you, Z. Uh, we we are joined by Counselor uh, Tracy Whitfield. As well as uh, Kim Lee from Mira Vista. Thank you so much for coming, Kim. And Ms. uh, Council Whitfield has a a question or she has her hand up. Go ahead, um, Council Whitfield.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, uh, Z, thank you for coming and presenting. So happy um, about this coalition. I remember that you called me about something else, but you kind of explained the coalition and I wasn't aware of it at the time. But I actually ran into someone who needed support. Mom was going through dementia and I was able to, because I had just talked to you like maybe the week before, I was able to refer this informa- um, this person to your organization. And I don't know if he was in touch or not, but it was just good to have a support like that. Because a lot of times we don't know where to go in these type of situations and how to even like deal with it or manage it. So I'm just happy um, that you're here, definitely willing to support the work that you all are doing in any way that we can. I'm not a ward counselor, but you know, there's also opportunities to go to neighborhood councils, to come to the C three that I do chair. Other areas to like get you all involved. So I just wanted to say thank you for coming to present to us today. And um, any information you have on the Memory Sunday. The June second, I put it in my calendar because if it's not on my calendar, it doesn't exist to me. So many things going on, but um, look forward to the information on that and on the caregiver event that you're gonna have. And I also wanted to say it's great to see you, Kim. Definitely miss you in your other role. But glad you found one that you're like happy in as well. So very, very glad to see you here. And Megan, I don't know if we ever met, but I look forward to getting to know you. And then I just wanted to thank our Commissioner who's always involved in anything health related. Really not surprised to see her on this one, but I'm glad that she is here and that she has been supporting um, the Dementia Coalition for some time now.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Council Whitfield. I value and appreciate you so much. So thank you.
If I could just say, thank you for the correction. We do have more than ward counselors we have at large. So thank you very much for that correction.
And uh, Ms. Z, I'm I'm sure wants all the counselors to be spreading the message and to be talking about this. So that's what we're going to do. Uh, and then, Kim, of course, I welcome your attendance here because you are based in Holyoke, but I'm sure that you deal with a lot of our residents from Springfield. That would probably benefit from this information too. So we welcome you. Thank you so much for being here. Do you want to talk a bit, uh, introduce yourself, Kim?
Sure. Inside, thank you so much. You know, I'm, and now that I, you know, um, professionally, I've I've made the move, you know, over to the other side of the river. But um, thankfully, there's a bridge. So it it makes, you know, going back and forth that much, that much easier. And um, you know, having been born and raised in Springfield, we'll, we'll always have, you know, Springfield at um, you know, in the middle of my heart, um, just very, very always um, supportive of and wanting to be supportive of of all of the efforts that are happening in Springfield. And um, Ms. Z, I I just had a, had a question. And and that is, um, if if you were willing to share any Facebook messaging, or if you had any templates that you might be able to share with us, I would happily um, send that out from my own personal Facebook page, LinkedIn page. Because I, I do think that when people are in the moment, finding those resources that they need, you know, their their mental health, um, their mindset, um, may not just be open to having to find all of those resources. So however, I personally can be helpful in in helping you to cascade out that message. I I I would um, be very happy to do that.
Yeah, thank you for mentioning that. We do have a Facebook, um, Facebook page and we do have an email. Our website is under construction, but I'll be happy to put the um, Facebook page details in our email in the chat room. So thank you for that question, Kim.
That's actually great if you could um, like or follow our, it's Springfield Dementia Friendly Coalition on Facebook and just share some of the, our educational events and some, stuff like that. To just, so that more people just trying to gain awareness and kind of spread the word that these things are happening. And a few different things I'd so, I wanted to say, yes, we're happy to do. I'm happy to do educational presentations anywhere. So um, a couple of things I did, I did touch base with um, Teresa with the Public Health. Yes, Teresa Glenn, Springfield Department of Health and Human Services. To get a couple of events on the, the calendar for Public Health Month in Springfield, actually. So.
Well, that's great.
We were already, we're doing an educational program at um, Springfield Housing Authority on April twenty eighth, at which anyone can attend. And then we're going to offer one on Zoom too, just to get on that public health calendar. So anyone can attend that Zoom um, educational program. It's just going to be a one hour program on the ten warning signs of Alzheimer's and dementia. So that'll be open to the public. What we would also love to do is, we would really like to train. So I don't know who the best people to talk to about this is. But in in smaller towns, we've really had success in this around dementia friendly in training. Basically just staff with the town. So part of it is, we just want to make sure that all of our staff is trained in basics, best practices around dementia friendly too. So can we, we want to train the like city counselors, but others just city council, um, city staff um, around. And it can, it can be a really quick training, like literally thirty minutes on Zoom. I can just do a presentation on, you know, what is Alzheimer's and dementia? What's the difference? Resources, some just basics around the disease and how we can support people. So we would love to do that. And then the other pieces, and so, Kim, yeah, Mira Vista, we would love to train staff there too. So that's a whole nother um, option. And we can do it, like I said, on Zoom or or in person as well. And then the other piece was the, the first responders. So it would be, it's a big, it would be a big help to get our first responders trained. You know, and the police are, or should already be getting training through their police academy. But but fire and EMS would be, you know, they're not really receiving much training. And so it would be just so beneficial. These are people who are really interacting with, with people with dementia every day. And doing these um, on the ambulances and yeah, firefighters. So to partake in a quick first responder training, it's specifically a training for first responders around dementia. If they could agree to do that. I mean, I think the biggest challenge is like the scheduling, basically. So I understand that's a challenge, but we're willing to be very flexible and accommodate, um, you know, different schedules. Do, like I said, can do it on Zoom, in person, whatever. So yeah, those are kind of the things we want to hit. And then also, just like Z said, just be publicizing some of our other community education um, events, programs that are going on in June. And some of our future events as well. But just trying to make sure that people are just have this awareness and this information and and can share it with families who are just really in the thick of it and going through either caregiving or people who've just gotten a diagnosis. And we just want to make sure that people are aware that there is support out there.
And and if I could add another piece, you know, one of our major uh, efforts is to eliminate or at least reduce the stigma. You know, that's really, really important because once that is uh, you know, dismantled, then folks will feel comfortable in receiving help. You know, removing the shame, that's going to be important. And then, as I mentioned earlier, you can, you can live a quality life. You know, and people will support you without fear and shame and things like that. So.
Absolutely. So thank you so much. I think that that's something that's doable, is those trainings at the cities, at the uh, city level. I'm, uh, Council Whitfield and myself, I just recruited her to make that happen for the city council. So we're going to, uh, Council Whitfield, I know she's got her hand up. She's probably going to say the same thing. So we're going to make that happen for the city council and invite everyone. And then I would like for you to connect to Ed Whitley, who is the Neighborhood Council um, Director. And he could get you in touch with all the neighborhood councils. I think going there and presenting to them would be amazing. Uh, yes, Council Whitfield.
I'm sorry. Yeah, I'll be happy to help you, hold on, um, get that going. But that was not my question. And and my question, you know, I've never dealt with this before. So I don't know the difference between dementia and honestly. So I don't know if I could get a brief, like, quick definition of.
Yeah, no, thank you so much for asking that. And yeah, that's why we want to do these just brief trainings for everyone. Because, you know, unless you've been personally touched by this disease, or, you know, been a caregiver yourself, or have it in your family, you know, many people just don't know and just don't have the basic awareness. So we just want to um, help educate people around these basics. And so that when they do encounter someone, um, they can just have a little bit more of that background knowledge. And dementia friendly is also about just, you know, if if you notice someone, for example, in the grocery store, who maybe they're an old friend or an old neighbor or something. And but then you notice that maybe they have some dementia symptoms that instead of kind of turning around and walking in the other direction, dementia friendly is just not being afraid to have that conversation. You know, still being friends with that person with dementia, still having that conversation or helping someone out at the grocery store for a minute. That it's just, just being a bit more neighborly too around, around this. And because this is actually a really common disease, you know, many people are living with dementia. And I will answer your question in one second. I'm giving a tiny bit more background here. But um, that, you know, it's common in the population. And the other piece we want to share is the numbers are going to increase. So we're expecting um, the number of people living with Alzheimer's or dementia to double in the next two decades. So the the numbers are on the increase. Um, and that's just partially because the population is aging. And partially because um, people are living longer with other types of disease. We've gotten better at treating things like heart disease, cancer. But that means people are living longer and are more likely to develop dementia at some point in their life. So it is going to affect more and more people. So anyway, um, quick, yeah, difference between Alzheimer's and dementia. Dementia is just the general term, the umbrella term that describes the set of symptoms of memory loss, changes in thinking and behavior, cognitive changes. So both terms are correct. Dementia is the general term. Alzheimer's disease is the specific type of disease that's causing the dementia symptoms. So Alzheimer's is just a more specific term that describes the actual disease. Whereas dementia is a more generic term, a general term for, for memory loss and changes in thinking and behavior. So there's other things, other diseases that fall under that dementia umbrella like um, vascular dementia, frontotemporal dementia, Lewy body dementia that go under there with with Alzheimer's. So at the Alzheimer's Association, we treat people with all different types of dementia, not just Alzheimer's. So we would group, group all these people together who have some form of dementia because all the symptoms are very similar and they're all actually um, fatal progressive brain diseases.
And and if I could just add this point, you know, when we were growing up, we would identify, we would identify folks such as senile. You know, and what they had was actually dementia or Alzheimer's. So you know, that's the correct terminology. But those are the behaviors that we probably saw growing up and didn't know how to identify them.
Right, right. Thank you so much for that.
You know, help break stigmas, stigmatism. And um, so thank you because I have heard senile growing up, right? I didn't even know what it meant then. Like, why are they senile? Like, what makes them senile? But definitely didn't know the difference between Alzheimer's and dementia. So I definitely appreciate that little bit of knowledge right there. And I, I look forward to learning more because I don't, I can't honestly say I know what the symptoms are. If I seen somebody that seemed like different to me, I don't know if I would be like, oh, they acting funny like they don't know me or they could have. Like that. So um, even like, I know folks with dementia and I don't know if I should approach them, would I scare them? Like, you know, either how to like, you know, maneuver around folks with dementia because definitely don't want to, you know, you know, cause any additional harm. So I look forward to learning more. So and I thank you for the um, knowledge that you bestowed on me already.
Thank you so much, Council Whitfield. Um, and thank you so much. Yes, uh, um, Commissioner.
If I may, I need to um, go to another meeting, but let me say a couple of things. Number one, um, I have administrative oversight over other city departments, uh, Health and Human Services, veterans, um, the animal control shelter, the libraries. And I say that to say, I invite you to come to one of my cabinet meetings and do a presentation for the department heads that report to me because they all uh, deal with uh, individuals in the city of Springfield. And it would be important um, to hear your presentation. That's number one. Number two, I, under my department, have a three thirty health center called Health Services uh, for the homeless. And so we partner with Mercy Medical Center, uh, and we partner with Open Door Open Pantry, which is a part of SMOC, the Southern Middlesex Opportunity Council. Again, doing a presentation with that group might be helpful as far as spreading the word is concerned. So those are two opportunities that I will offer you as far as um, educating the um, individuals who are within my wheelhouse. The other thing I would say is, uh, Z, I would love to see us do something to memorialize Cynthia Scott Mitchell. Really, uh, because I think what's important to me is that she was a pioneer. And I remember doing many presentations um, with her at various venues around uh, aging, dementia. The, being a dementia friendly city had everything to do with her advocacy and her work. So what I, I I'm thinking about, if we could do a forum that memorializes her, but yet use it as an educational piece for the community, I think that might be a way of getting the message out as well. So I offer you those three things. Those are action steps I can help with. And I'd like to be able uh, to support this because it is important to um, our community. So thank you for coming, Z. Thank you, Megan. Um, and look forward to working with you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you so much. That's amazing. I'm so excited that that's going to happen. And something that you said, Z, about the stigma, right? Uh, as a social worker, we deal with the mental health uh, illness. They'll sick stigma all the time, substance abuse stigma. Um, and this is just a continuation of that. So I'm really excited that we're going to be talking about this, that we're going to continue talking about this. Um, and Council Whitfield and myself are going to figure out a way to get the council members, all of them to participate in your training. It's a half an hour. I don't see why it can't happen soon. And then, you know, like you said, getting, getting the word out, I think the more people hear about it, the more we're going to be aware. And the more people are going to respond and probably come to you for help. Because like you said, everybody is going to be experiencing this, this in their families, maybe in themselves at some time or another. So um, having the information is vital. So I really truly appreciate you guys coming. So um having the information is vital. So I really truly appreciate you guys coming here today um and just sharing this with us, you know. Um, so we have some action steps that we're going to take. Um, I really love that idea, um memorializing Cynthia Scott Mitchell, Mitchell and doing a forum, that'd be amazing. Maybe we can figure out a way to uh work together to make that happen.
Absolutely.
Okay, so just be in touch with me on that. Um, the city council, I'm sure can help um get the word out at least. Um, but a- 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 as a um clinician, I think I would love to to help make that happen. Um, so thank you so much.
But I would like to help make it happen too. So.
All right, you're you're with me already. You're already one of them.
We can do this. We don't have to make it happen. We can do it. We could just say we're going to do it and we get it done.
All right, we got it. Excellent. Thank you so much. So good. Um, again, um Z and Megan, uh Ed Whitley is the Neighborhood Council's Director. So he's in charge of all the neighborhood councils. Um, if you don't have his contact information, I can get you in touch with him. I'd really like to figure out a way to see about getting the fire department and the EMS um staff uh trained and aware of that. And we'll figure out a way to do that as well. We're gonna do it.
Well, this sounds amazing and I love the idea of an event to memorialize Cynthia too. I think that's something that's overdue. And it can really, like you said, connect the the issues of of both being honoring her and and having it be educational, which which she would want. So yes, I think that's something we can definitely do. Um, and yes, I would love to speak in front of all these groups. We all would in um to do these trainings, getting in front of as many, yeah, neighborhood councils, definitely. The C three, yes, and um the other groups that were mentioned to the cabinet meeting. Um, so yeah, let's let's set this up. Um, and yeah, like you said, Zeta, because the the training's pretty short for, you know, groups who want that short training, we we can set that up pretty easily. So, um, yes, wonderful.
All right, great. And and be in touch with me about the Indian Orchard Citizens Council, Z. Um, we have a monthly community dinner. And I think at those dinners, one of those dinners could be something that you guys come in and participate in, okay?
Sounds great.
Great. Anything else you guys wanted to share with us or any other questions from anyone?
Well, you know, I'm just going to put that out there, uh put this out there. You know, we are a grassroots organization. And uh, you know, whatever grants uh and monies that can help us continue this effort would be greatly appreciated. And that's where collaborations and partnerships and things like that uh will help us um, you know, carry on.
Okay, and um, yeah, and if we could figure out a way to find you guys some money, that would be great.
Yeah, sounds good.
That always helps. That always helps. Well, thank you again so much uh for being here, for making this happen. Um, and I look forward to continuing to work with you. And we're going to have to get together and have a planning meeting for the forum.
Yeah, sounds good. All right. Thank you all and thank you for your time.
Guys, have a good one. Bye-bye. Bye.